The board is very happy to have all of the board member candidates be able to speak to the public today. Thank you very much for being here. And I believe the speakers are going to be in the same order as if they are.
Exact order.
All right. So without further delay then, the first speaker will be Jeff Goldberg.
Check with my name and address? No, all right. Jeff Goldberg. Good evening. Writing for school board is not something to be taken lightly. It is one of the most challenging and important volunteer positions you can find. Through its oversight of the budget and superintendent, the school board is ultimately responsible for the success or failure of the schools. This translates into the happiness and well-being of our children in the present, as well as the education and opportunities that we'll have available to them in the future. Due to the elegant design of our republic, this great responsibility is not without bounds. Instead, it is a mechanism by which the people can correct the schools and allow their voices to be heard. The school board works for the residents of this community. It is the community's responsibility to select school board members and provide feedback to them. I believe it is the candidate's responsibility to clearly let the voters know who they are and what they believe in so that the voters can make an informed decision, even if this means losing some votes. I will attempt to use this speech to help with this endeavor. Transparency is about honest communication and making information accessible and easy to find. I see several opportunities to increase our transparency. To start with, the school board needs to answer questions asked at school board meetings. Our school board works for the residents of this community. Imagine if an employee refused to answer any questions their mentor asked of them. Would you consider this acceptable? Easy, technical questions should be answered right after the pre-meeting comments. For items that require additional time to research or whose response may vary based on the school board member, we can add a comment section to the board education webpage that allows each school board member to write their response to the questions at a later time. We need to improve the clarity of the items being voted on during the meeting. Frequently at the end of the school board meeting, the school board will group items A through E together and unanimously approve them with little or no discussion. Often, this is the only decision the school board needs to make during the meeting, yet this process typically takes less than five minutes out of a two-hour meeting. With possible, each item should be discussed with sufficient detail at the preceding board education meeting in order to give the community time to provide their feedback. The school board should then vote on each item individually. We also need better time management of the meetings. Not only are the school board meetings about discussing the items being voted on, but it is also an opportunity for the school board to provide valuable feedback to the superintendent. If something is working well, we need to communicate that to the superintendent so that they can utilize that success in other areas. If something is not working well, we need to bring that to light so it can be fixed. A transparency concern I am seeing throughout the school district is its sensitivity to criticism. I realize it does not feel good to hear criticism, and so it may be inaccurate or unreasonable. However, well put out criticism is extremely valuable. If we can accurately define the problem, we're only a few steps away from having a solution. We should not act defensively to criticism, but view it as a potential opportunity to improve the quality of education. I'd rather have the school board talk about all the problems we have in the school district so we can fix them over falsely thinking everything is fine. The school board has a responsibility to protect the rights of parents, students, and teachers. This means respecting the medical choices parents make with their children and the medical decisions made by the teachers and stepmeters. This means that conversations between a student and a counselor can be private, however, as soon as an item of discussion is no longer private, the first people being informed are the parents. This means that the material covered in class needs to be age-appropriate, and any material of an adult nature or involving sensitive subject matter should have the approval of the parents. It means working with the parents of students with special accommodations to develop the best plan for their child. It means understanding that the families are the deciding factor in education and care of their children. One of the reasons we selected Skinny Atlas was because of its small-town values. When my oldest daughter Kelly started kindergarten at Waterden eleven years ago, she felt comfortable at the school, enjoyed going inland alive. As parents, we also felt that school district was part of the community and were encouraged to get involved in school activities. We need to restore this small-town feel to our school district. We can start by encouraging the Laker values of leadership, accountability, kindness, effort, and respect. These values provide a good quote of conduct for everyone at whole-grade levels. We can also allow teachers to have additional flexibility in the classroom, which can improve the excitement level for the students and the effectiveness of the teachers. Yes, there needs to be structure, and the students need to demonstrate their ability to meet certain milestones. However, teachers need to have the freedom to use their creativity in order to most effectively teach the students the best of their abilities, which often involves different approaches for each student. We need to let the students form their own opinions. Politics and social issues should be discussed, but in a neutral fashion so that the students can form their own opinions. We should avoid CRT or other programs designed to persuade the students to think a certain way. Both the parents and students should feel a sense of ownership. Parents should know what material is being covered in class and should participate in some of the activities such as field trips and school events. Students and parents should be respected as individuals and feel personally involved in the learning process. We can also improve how we measure teacher performance. For instance, one method we use is teacher observation. An observer watches a teacher during their class and goes through a checklist of different items and provides feedback to the teacher. In addition to this, why not also talk with the students and parents? This will provide a clearer overall picture, and if multiple individuals are producing a method or technique that is very effective, this can be shared with other teachers. Or if there's a consistent issue, this can be communicated to the teacher to help them improve. Analysis of test results of the students should also be part of the process because it provides quantitative data. We need to listen to the feedback from teachers and faculty involved in the improvement process of the schools. This will provide huge benefits since they are directly being affected by decisions being made. We can also listen to the students. For example, some items students have talked me about are being happy that the school restored the cafeteria seating, requesting that the schools turn back on the water tanks, pointing out that the pencil sharpeners in the classrooms have most likely never been replaced in our neighborhood. The nice thing about these requests is they often involve little to go past, so they can be implemented much more quickly. By involving the parents, students, teachers, faculty, and support organizations such as the PTC, we can quickly address concerns and opportunities to create an atmosphere of continuous improvement where the quality of this school district gets better every year. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak, and I did know. I didn't have time to cover every topic, there's so many out there. So if you have any questions or you just want to talk to me about the school district, feel free to talk to me in person or contact me via email or text or phone. Thank you.
Our next speaker, and again about order, is Danielle Flackenstein.
As Tom said, my name is Danielle Flackenstein. I'm obviously a current board member. I have a seventh and eighth grade child in the district, and I'm originally from Boston, but moved back here twenty years ago with my husband. He is originally from Skinnietliss. Three years ago, when I ran for my first term on the board, many people asked me why I would sign up for this. To be honest, I didn't have some amazing answer. I didn't have a special agenda. I didn't have a pet project. I just knew that I wanted to help, and I wanted to be a reasonable voice for our district. That was the case then. That is certainly the case now, and that's why I'm running for a second term. Being on a school board is not glamorous. There's no financial gain. There's a lot of weeknights where we miss our home kids' events, we miss birthdays, games, et cetera. But the pay comes in other forms. It comes from seeing all those Upstate Mind Kids that were here. It comes from seeing a school play. It comes from having a mom come up to you at the grocery store and tell you about her kid who had trouble in school, and someone at the school, whether it was a counselor or a teacher, connected with them and helped them. That is the pay. That is why I do this. That is why I want to do this again. I want to be here to help all of our students succeed academically, as a person, and as they try to find their place in this world, and they are going to move on to once they leave our district. It is apparent now more than ever that we need a reasonable voice for our community. Schools are where many children make their first friends, they learn how to interact with peers, they learn how to push themselves, they discover what their interests are and what things really excite them. They also come here sometimes seeking help and guidance and figuring out their place in the world and what they might need some help with. We are fortunate to have a district that is on solid financial footing. This is not by accident. This is the result of smart and careful resource planning, continued community support, and appropriate uses of our funds and reserves. The financial position allows us to offer our students so much more in terms of academic, extracurricular, and social emotional support. Whether it's the academics or mental health, I believe it's critical that as a board we constantly ask ourselves, are we doing the best we can today? And what about tomorrow? And what about after that? What is the next thing that our students are going to need? Are we ready to handle it? And if not, what do we need to do and what do we need to put in place so that we are prepared when that day comes? As a board, a district, and a community, we need to be looking ahead and setting up our students for their next steps. We need to work towards helping all of our students be the best version of themselves and achieve their personal best. We need to teach our children that taking care of one another, advocating for those that can't speak up, and taking care of ourselves, them taking care of themselves, is really important. We need to give students the foundational skills to navigate the world beyond this little bubble that we all live in and love, and the confidence in the skills that they've developed here, the confidence in knowing it's okay to say that they are not okay, and knowing that failing forward is not failure at all. Skinny Atlas has always been known as an amazing place to receive an education. From our early intervention math and reading, our wide range of AP offerings, the addition of mental health, we are putting in all these systems in place to ensure our students both academic and social emotional success and needs are met. I don't think our work here is done. I actually hope that it is never done. I hope that we can constantly look at ourselves and ask if we as a board and we as a community are doing all that we can for all of our students. If you look at the implementation of a middle school reading support specialist or the new mental health position, those are just two examples of the things that we're doing, but we need to keep doing those. Beyond academic support for both our high achievers and our students who may be struggling, we can't forget about everyone else. There is an entire group of students in the middle of both of those groups. It is important that we make sure that all of our students' needs are being met. Are all of our students achieving their personal best? Are we doing the work here, us, staff, community, to make sure that every student feels like they are being supported by us? Are we doing the work to support all students' post-graduation plans, whether it's college or a chosen career path? This is an ongoing conversation that I think we continue to have going in the future because I want to make sure that every student in our district succeeds when they leave our boards. None of this happens overnight. One person can't create this change alone, but if elected for my second term, I'll work hard to push our administration and our staff and the board towards these goals because our community, our district, and most of all, all the students deserve it. If you've listened to any of the past board meetings, you know that I talk a lot. I ask a lot of questions. I promise if I'm sitting here in the next go-around, I will continue to do the same. I will always ask why. I will ask if we need to do more. I will ask if we are considering every student in this district. I will keep speaking up for every student regardless of their interests, their extracurriculars, their grades, their financial status. None of that matters. Every student in this district deserves a voice. I hope that as a community, we can look ahead and realize we have a common goal, and that is the success of all of our students, and that we can find ways to work together towards that goal. With that, I ask for your support on May seventeenth because I promise to continue to be a reasonable voice. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gary Hamble.
Good evening, everyone. Like I was introduced, I'm Gary Hamble. I just spent, I was fortunate to have spent six months on the board and had a good exposure to the inner workings of it, and I've still been several boards prior to that. You know, the typical question that we all face with all the candidates that are running would be, what are your three top priorities? What are the things you think, you know, the building is usually what we're dealing with? I've got three of them. I've got seventeen of them. I've got several of them. But I can tell you, you know, governance being one, because as a board, our responsibility we have, we've got to do policy, policy drives in this respect. We have to hold, you know, our superintendent and ourselves accountable, all right? We have, you know, mental health, of course. We have to make sure that we, for me, that's also one of my priorities. And we have to make sure that we're fiscally responsible. Those are the three things. We've got flooded with a lot of funds recently, but it's not going away, and we have to make sure despite how fortunate we have about our district and resources we're exposed of, we have to ensure that we manage to pass various funds for the best possible outcome. Okay? So instead of having seventeen though, right? When it goes to the three, what I am mostly interested in from being on the board is that, is that you understand how a board works, understand that I may have three priorities, and each of the other board members have their priorities, but the board operates as a body politic. It operates where you need to have four out of seven votes. So what is of, kind of, among the importance is that we have the ability to work together. Sometimes we have to, you know, subjugate our individual needs at a particular point in time to make sure we address the greater good at that point in time that we have a discussion. So my interest, I've been exposed to a lot of discussions for the time I've been on the board, and I think for the voting public, what's important is that, is that you examine how the candidates operate, because hot topics are going to be a moving target. We don't know what's going to happen six months from now. We don't know what the challenges are going to be, all right? We don't know where we're going to be, but what we have to be assured of is that the persons who have on the board that has governance, has fiscal responsibility, has the management and maintenance of the district, you're going to be, I think we have to be assured that we can express our opinions and we will do the right thing collectively, because that's how the boards operate. And that is my interest, and that's where, I think my personality and how I do business is, it's an easy one. I think we, negotiation, everything involves negotiation, but not subjugation of your values. There's a difference. And I propose, you know, should I be elected, since I was selected last war on? I'd like to continue the beautiful work that we've been doing. We've got four positions, and I would appreciate a lens vote and examination of the character and style of the positions that you're putting in those seats for the next three years, varying timelines. Examine those, examine those aspects of the candidates and project what we need as a forward-looking solution. Let's not, well, too much, you know, we celebrate the successes, celebrate all the good stuff we've learned, but we're going to be looking forward, going to be looking ahead. We had the Upstate Mind Kids. Remember, we're modeling, right? We're modeling behavior. And guess what? They had problems. They had issues they had to work through. There are times where they had to give up. They had to prioritize. Different folks had to pretty much step back and say, okay, let's go with what you're doing this war on, and then we can ease ourselves through it, right? They are modeling for us. So we have to ensure that we go ahead and we lead the district and we provide the resources, and we have the right composition so that we can handle anything that comes. All right? So in closing, I think I'm pushing up in three and a half minutes. I appeal to the voters to consider me, consider what I bring to the table, and hopefully I can serve a good three-year term coming up. Thank you.
Our fourth speaker tonight is Tanya Coleman.
You guys need the laughter, Mommy? I have a little, sorry. Oh. Can you take this? Because I'm going to use, I have a tendency to talk with my hands, so I need one hand free. Okay. So, good evening. Welcome. Thank you to all the board members that are here and the community members, if anybody's showed up that has not, pardon, by us. Thank you for being at tonight's meeting. My name is Tanya Coleman. If you do not know who I am, that was my husband Matthew. We have two children in the school district, a junior and a freshman, Lily and Samuel. We moved to the school district about nine years ago. Matthew and I are both pharmacists. He worked at Upstate Hospital, and I previously worked at the candy drugs in the Spelby Village for approximately fifteen years, which at least hopefully some of you recognize me from, as long as fifteen years, and hopefully a good fifteen years. Wonderful for me, hopefully wonderful for you. While working at candies, there was a collaboration that became available to teach the third graders about poison prevention, and I immediately volunteered to do so and did so for three year term. We also collaborated as a team with the community to raise money for the Children's Miracle Network, and we did that for four years term. My unique schedule allowed me to actually volunteer within each of my children's classrooms, all the way from kindergarten through the eighth grade, which I can say was an amazing experience, and I was glad that I was able to do that. Now, I'm helping to volunteer with Girls on the Run, and I am volunteering at both, or local libraries, to read their old kids, trying to teach the children that there's another way to read, and that there is a lot of ways to live, to learn, and to be. I was diagnosed with an autoimmune disease in 2015, which cost me my vision in 2020. Because of everything I've been through, I do think as a community, we could be having some different types of motivational speeches in our schools. We do want to encourage our children that they can be anything that they want to be. But it's also important to teach them that every single job is important, and that college may not be for everybody. Please don't throw me out to me. This village is so beautiful, there's an illusion of perfectionism around it. I would use word bubble, but Danielle already used it. But not everybody that lives in this village is perfect. And I feel like we need to be teaching our grown children a more honest outlook, outlook like it's going to look like after school. And we need to try to teach them some skills and the mindset on how to hit any curveball that might come back, come at them back, and what is hopefully a positive meaning. So not just motivational speeches per se, but some honest ones about life in general. Potentially, some budget and financial workshops could maybe be also thrown in there, just for the sake of. I also believe that having a driver's education program that is more expansive is advantageous in the times that we live in. We need to remember that not every family might have a second vehicle and/or the time to give their children five hundred hours. Quick fundraising note, I actually thought that the freshman's cookie fund, text, text cookie fundraising was an amazing idea, but I cannot possibly be the only person in Skinny Atlas who has people, family members scattered around the United States. If there had been a second link for people to donate money to the class without buying the cookies or their moms or their whatevers, people don't always want the cookies, we potentially could have raised even more funds for that class. So that's just food for thought and a future fundraiser. I am fully worried that the school board is only controlled in as much as our county, governor, state, and federal government give us those freedoms and or those funds. When I approached about running, my friends had a lot of ideas. Why do we have so many sports teams, especially at the JV and younger level? Why are we not letting our homeschool children participate in those sports teams and/or any of our extracurricular activities when we are allowing them to go to the volleyball games? And a lot of what I've heard is why are we putting so much pressure and stress on our juniors and seniors? I could go on and on, but I will say to the room what I said to them. What I, excuse me, I'm sorry. The school board has an agenda that may not include my personal agenda. The school board's job is to make the right decision for the children, our children, our community, and our children within the guidelines and limitations of their area. I believe it is my job to tell the room that I have the confidence to make our decisions to help the Board of Education incorporate the consensus needs and priorities of this school district and turn those ideas into strong policies. I am genuinely looking forward to becoming a more active member of this community, so I would love your support and your role on May seventeenth. This is where I'm going to apologize to the board, which I think is over here now, because Matthew and I have to cut run after damn speech. I have an appointment about more tomorrow that we were running, both canceled, so we need to start driving. But I have been listening to the last six, ten months worth of school board speeches that I could listen to online, trying to get a mechanism for what your agenda or meetings go, feel like, look like, sound like, what the budget breakdown sounds like, which actually I think that is the most important, meaning I listen to, more people should listen to that one. And most importantly, getting a feel for your voices. I think I have a good idea of your lineup, but I'm not positive, so don't test me. So I do want to apologize, and I will listen to the board meeting when we come back. This is where I would just like to thank everyone for listening to me. I hope you have a wonderful rest of your gaming, and I hope you're all safe. Thank you.
And our final speaker candidate tonight is Tim Caverro.
I am Tim Caverro. I have worn many hats in my life: son, student, teacher, coach, husband, dad, school administrator, and grandpa. I'm hoping to add one more, school board member. With seven of my non-grandchildren residing in the Skinny Atlas School District, I continue to have a big interest in the Skinny Atlas School District, where I spent the last twenty years of my career in education. After five years as an assistant high school principal and athletic director, I spent fifteen years as a middle school principal here. Due to an unexpected life change from my wife's passing, I found more time in my day. I have a need to do something positive and want to give back to the Skinny Atlas community that supported me for my twenty years here. Serving on the school board makes sense to me. Since announcing that we're on, many people have asked what's your agenda, what's your platform? The interesting thing is, I don't have one. I feel I'm a neutral person who's here to listen to students, teachers, staff, parents, community members to facilitate and collaborate. I'm here for all students, not a select group. I'm here as an ally for advocate and for all parents, not a particular self-centered. In addition, I'm here to ensure that we are representing the taxpayers and being fiscally responsible. Agenda to me sounds like a political word, and my philosophy has always been that politics does not have a place within a classroom or a school district. As a community, we need to work together as a collective unit, not as individuals or factions. I believe that having an agenda would defeat the purpose of being on a school board and that all students must have a fair and equal opportunity for an education. Being a school board member means representing the entire community. After twenty years in Skinny Atlas, I feel I know the community well. Over time, the edge, it takes a village to raise a child. Once embedded right in our letterhead and newsletter banners, it's begun to take a backseat. We need to get back to that, working as one collectively, doing what is best for kids. I've identified three areas of focus that I believe are foundational to all we do. For the best learning to take place, we must provide a safe environment, strong academics, and life-enhancing extras. One, a safe environment. Students are not ready to learn unless they feel safe in their environment. So many things can affect a student, from the school bus, the hallways, to the social media. Teachers do their best to pick up when something is wrong. We must continue to work to mitigate physical, verbal, or emotional threats, and to identify when students are faced with mental health issues, depression, anxiety, or life changes that impact their ability to learn. Two, strong academics. Skinny Atlas is one of the top-ranked school districts in the country. The work of a board and administration to provide the best possible education never stops. It's a constant challenge to provide quality teachers with all they need to help our students perform. We must continue to evaluate and evolve to ensure we are providing opportunities for all students to learn. It's important we continue to teach what we feel is important to the students in this community. We know our students best and what's best for our own kids. Three, extracurricular enrichments. Athletic and artistic opportunities for students of all ages are important to run out their experiences at school. These extras develop and enhance lifelong skills, team-building, respect, communication, creativity, memory recall, abstract raising, sense of community, and expression. Again, doing all these things, and I need to be accomplished while being consciously and fiscally responsible to... while being conscious of being fiscally responsible to the people in the community. So many have passed along positive words to me in support. I ask you to turn your words into action and turn up and vote on May 17th. If you have a conflict, you can request an absentee ballot online in the Sherrville District Court. If you feel what I have said is logical, you think the school district should be going, vote for me on the last name on the ballot. Thank you for listening.